All right, good evening. I'd like to call the order, the Thursday, December 2nd, Planning Board Meeting. I'd like everyone to stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
All right, so introduction of board members. We have Amber Fecto, we have Jerry Graybill, and we have Phil Roy. We also have Tammy, our new town planner. We have Jen McCabe, our town code enforcement officer, and we have Lee Jay with Southern Maine Planning Development, right?
Right.
Yeah. All right, I'm gonna open the first public comment. Seeing how no one's here, there's no one online, I guess I'll close the public comment. Now, moving on to approval of minutes for the November 4th meeting.
I've reviewed the minutes and see no issues.
Agreed.
All right.
I'll move through.
Okay, okay. I'll be abstaining. I was not here, so all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. Now, old business. Final Plan, Major Subdivision, Phase 4, Heritage Drive, R 43-5, Steve Clement.
One thing I thought of on the findings of fact, I don't know if you want to note that Phase 4 is gonna be phased in. I don't believe I could even do that. So I don't know if you want to put this as the first phase of Phase 4, or if you just want to let it go as Phase 4 because the final plans that Steve brought in have it all delineated in it as Phase 4A, 4B, 4C. I have them behind me to sign.
Okay.
If you approve them.
I don't think it really matter. I mean, we can just leave it as it is for now. All right, so one question was on the conditions of approval, right Jerry? It was noted about the cul-de-sac versus the hammerhead. I think Jerry can get in more detail with it.
The notes from the last time we looked at that. Does that need to go in here, or has that been resolved?
No, there is a reason why he put the hammerhead inside the cul-de-sac. If he removes the cul-de-sac, any property, any lots on that cul-de-sac will not have enough road furniture.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, I just wanted to make sure, because I left it as a question.
Okay, I'm fine.
Okay, so there's no waivers. So what, we're approving the findings of fact and the conditions, and then the final approval, right? Correct, okay.
I'll make a motion to approve the findings of fact.
I will second.
Okay, further discussion? Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay. For the...
I just got one question real quick. On the phasing part, that's on the plans, but I think I'd like to add it in the, just the minutes, because the way we did this was to break it down where these lots won't be available till I come back to the board for assessing.
Yep.
I don't think it's that big a deal, but maybe I should just have it in the minutes when I come down and talk to assessing on things that I finalize it. You know, that's, we all are on the same page.
Okay.
That's fair.
All right, thanks.
Now, I'm looking for the approval of the conditions.
I'll make a motion for approval of conditions.
I will second.
Okay, further discussion? Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, there we go. And now, the last part is just finding the final plan complete.
Make a motion that we find the plan complete.
I'll second that.
All right, further discussion? Nope, all in favor?
Aye.
All right, and there we go.
Steve, they'll sign the plans after the meeting, and if you want to come by on Monday and pick them up, take them to the registry, that would be fine.
All right, thank you.
Okay, next, on old business. Essential Services, Solar Array, 259 School Street, R 43-3.
And I left it as a, I didn't put in that it was a sketch plan review, but they amended it from your June meeting, so Mike will be able to explain how they changed it.
Okay. Thank you, everyone. I'm free to proceed.
But I don't know.
For the record, Michael Sudak, ATAR Engineering, here on behalf of NH Solar Garden. I have Andrew Keller here with me remotely. So, as Tammy alluded to, we were here for a sketch plan, I believe, in June. Most of you were here for that. So, the plan that you're looking at right now is the overall plan that, in response to some comments from Lee Jay when we were here for the subdivision side of what's abutting this development, we wanted to create this to kind of show how both of the two of them are engaged in their budget as far as, that they don't break this. So, intent of the project is still to create a, right around a 2-megawatt large solar farm. The panels will be ground-mounted, single-axle tracker panels that follow the sun throughout the day. Rows will be oriented from north to south. The overall size of the development is right around 16 acres, and that's overall occupied area. That includes the panels themselves, the shade management area, the perimeter fencing, the aisles between gravel access road, everything all told. Let's see, the project is subject to a couple different permits that we're in process with, with the state stormwater management law permit, a NERPA PBR for the significant vernal pool that we're barely touching the 250-foot habitat of, and then a NERPA Tier 1 for the small little bit of wetland impact we have up here and up here. So, what else do I have? I don't think, I don't think a ton else has changed since our sketch plan and since the application came into you guys in September, so I'd be happy to entertain any questions, or Andrew, if you have anything to add. And hopefully, you can hear me.
Only question I have is, you mentioned the panels will track the sun?
Yes.
Which is different than any other ones we have in town right now, right? They're all stationary? So this one will be different, okay.
So, I'm assuming all the current developments are fixed tilt?
Yep.
Yeah, okay.
Topography of the site, I'm not able to discern here. The vernal pool, is that at a lower elevation, or same or higher elevation than the proposed solar farm?
Lower, so...
It is lower.
I don't know if the, so this page doesn't show the topography. So, everywhere that you're taking a look at where our solar panels are, everything pitches to the Malloy Brook stream bed.
Okay.
There's a tiny little section of the roadway here that does flow into that vernal pool. I'm gonna call it an ephemeral pool, just because, you know, it's really not in a location that you would be expecting, like in a forested setting, but my non-IF&amp;W interpretation for why it's there is just very, very slow and very slight flow and soil types. But the entirety of the development, as far as the panels and travelway and everything are concerned, goes to the Malloy Brook. None of that comes down into the vernal pool, aside from a small section of the gravel access drive.
Okay.
Yep.
Lee Jay, you have something?
I had a question for Mike. I mean, you mentioned that you're looking at stormwater, NERPA PBR, and NERPA Tier 1, but have you looked to see how this might fall into site location development at all?
Yes, so Tammy did mention that in her memo that she gave me before the meeting. So, to enlighten the board, I know we've brought this up a couple times on the subdivision side. The two developments are being pushed through the town in parallel, at least that's our intent right now. I've submitted all of my revised content that you're seeing tonight to the state.
To the state, aye aye.
I'm having a pre-app meeting within the next week or two, and a determination will be made then on whether or not the project qualifies. It's my belief, or it's going to be my, I guess, profess, profession, that they're separate, separate from one another, they're separate drainage paths entirely. Like I said, this entire development goes to the Malloy Brook. The subdivision itself goes to the two culverted crossings underneath School Street. So, but, yeah, it's certainly something that we'll, we'll have to entertain and have the DEP make an official stance on. Thank you.
Yes, there was one other thing. Was, Tammy, was there something, what was it you were telling me earlier about, we were talking about this earlier, the subdivision?
When you look at the plan, even the revised, oh, sorry. When you look at the plans, even the revised one, they have a home that they had purchased with the property. That home has been sold, so that's one piece taken out of the property. So if they put the solar away array on another one in the subdivision, in the front part of it, you're looking at three different basic lots. That is a potential. That's why Maine DEP needs to make that decision.
Okay.
That's, that's a part that I don't have enough knowledge on, and I believe Lee Jay is in agreement with that, that we need Maine DEP to step in and make sure that this is all gonna be the one parcel or two parcels.
Okay.
So...
Yeah, I'll take that a little bit further, Mr. Chairman. I think that, where there are three parcels, all, there's the solar parcel, the parcel for the residential subdivision, if and when that comes back forward alive again, and this house parcel that was sold off. All three of those have been separated within the last five years, and so under state subdivision law, that really constitutes three lots, and that would also require this project to receive a minor subdivision or subdivision approval, as well as any other approvals that you're granted, one for the solar, and then whatever DEP is gonna determine regarding what I call a common scheme of development. Today, they call it development of state and regional significance. And I really think that that needs to be vetted before you folks actually go ahead and just approve the application. I think we need to hear from DEP whether or not that is gonna be considered or not.
Okay.
Agreed.
All right, so I guess discussion. Should we table this until we hear back from Maine DEP?
I think that's reasonable.
Okay.
I think so.
Okay.
So, I'm completely in agreement with Lee Jay that the vetting needs to happen prior to approval of this application and whatever approvals need to carry, subdivision, the solar entity itself. Does the board feel that, because it's my understanding that the next step in the town process would be scheduling a public hearing on this application, does...
We have to find it complete, and that's a sidewalk and a public hearing, yes.
Yes. Does the town feel that we're at any of those steps yet? I completely agree with...
So, I guess the issue right now is with Maine DEP, if they classify that as just one lot versus two, doesn't that change, that's the, it'd have to go through a different approval at that point, wouldn't it, Lee Jay? Like what you just said?
Well, yes, it would have to, excuse me, it would have to go through subdivision approval as well.
Right.
And so, I mean, I think that, I didn't review this submission as it came in myself personally, so I don't know if it's complete or not as it stands right now, but I would prefer that if we're gonna be waiting to hear back from DEP, that if there are any changes that require minor subdivision review, that there may be additional information that Mike needs to include in that plan set. So, I would defer not finding it complete yet.
I've missed a few meetings. I just want to make sure I'm not missing something. I know we had discussed previously, too, the detailed decommissioning plan. Did we ever receive that, or are we still awaiting that?
Still awaiting.
We are, okay. I think that would be valuable to have before the public piece as well, because, you know, you got the abutters, they're gonna have a vested interest in the decon plan, so.
Okay.
Just a recommendation.
If I may, if I may speak to that?
Yep.
Mr. Chairman, so the decommissioning process has now moved to a state-level procedure. There's actually a process where we have to follow the state procedure for decommissioning. So, as of October 18th of this calendar year, there's now been a statewide requirement for that. So, we have, we have the information that we always bring to our public hearings, and we set up like a public-facing document and website for folks to see and learn about. But this decommissioning requirement has now become a state requirement, and so we've been following that procedure. But within our public hearing packet, we provide a decommissioning plan and details as part of our frequently asked questions. It goes, you know, into your packets and into the public's eyes. So, I would say, suggest that, I'd like Mike to speak to the fact that, from your checklist, are we complete? And again, we know that our project would not be approved in its entirety until we get clarification from DEP. My experience with the SLODA process as it relates to the solar projects around the states, we've had quite a few that started triggering this concern at the state level, mostly solar to solar. But I, they use the guidance, and they provide guidance to the industry whereby if the ownership of the projects were the same, then that's what triggered the SLODA concerns that are brought up today. If there is separate ownership, clear and separate ownerships of the entities, then, then you were, you were not put into that bucket. So, as the applicant, my request would be that we could review this from a perspective that the application has been deemed complete. There may be additional steps that we need to do, and we would not obviously ask for approval until we get clarity. It sounds like Mike could get some of that clarity before, well before the next meeting. So, it would be my request that we respect what Lee Jay has shared and what Tammy has shared, but also ask that, can we just review the application? Has it met its merits as being complete? And recognize that we're gonna get more information by the public hearing and well before any approvals, to make sure that we don't have to go down a different path that Lee Jay has shared with us this evening. So, that would be my ask. I just have some requirements on myself to complete permitting in a timely fashion, and I'd like to see if we could keep the process moving forward and know that that will be, something we'll definitely clarify and make sure the board is comfortable with it before the approvals take place. We just, we'd prefer not to lose another month concerning this project. It's been in front of the board for quite a few months now, and we've still been trying to strive for completeness because of some of the personnel changes in your towns. We want to respect that, but also ask for some consideration if we could keep it moving forward.
If, may I? Absolutely sensitive to your timeline, sir. The underlying issue, my general concern and concerns for the townspeople is, I have, personally have not had an opportunity to review the state requirement. I do know that other projects that have come before the board, we have discussed, you know, the very comprehensive decommissioning plan, whereas, I don't know if the state requires you to set up a decommissioning fund. I don't know if that's part of their deal.
They do.
In future dollars. Okay, excellent. That's my big concern is...
There's a statewide surety that's required, no?
Okay, great. That's my biggest concern. I just, I don't want us having to clean it up if, if, you know, things change, stuff happens, so.
Yeah, no, we very much, I've been in this business for over 10 years now, and almost all of our projects require some form of surety to either the landowner or the town. We always set up our land leases with our landowners that says, if for some reason, and we have had towns that don't make that a priority, we have to do that for the landowner perspective. So it's not only the town's, you know, concern if something happened, it's also the landowners. So, now that the state has taken a more active role, because I, my sense is that it's been probably all over the place, you know, knowing Maine is kind of a young solar market in the grand scheme of things, that they took over that. So there's a very strict process and financial requirement and detail information that you're required before you can, you know, start your construction. So, that will then take some of that, that steep learning curve that the towns may have to deal with, and know that, you know, there's more of a protocol that we have to follow. So, it's brand new, we're all learning about it, but we all know that we can't start construction on any of these projects in the future until you have that. That's one of the other approvals that would be required. So, my ask to the town would probably be that, you know, that maybe becomes a condition of our approval, we get to that point, so that way the town feels comfortable that we're following a process. Again, obviously, we'll share full transparency of what our decommissioning plan and processing costs look like, and then from there, again, we'll follow the state procedures to make sure that it's covered. But, we absolutely will keep that in the forefront of the public conversations. It always comes up in our discussions with our, with our projects. We want to make sure that people are comfortable that, you know, it's not gonna be a bag of bones left, you know, in 20 years from now when none of us might be here even to talk about it. So, I just wanted the board to be comfortable that. That's very much a concern of ours. We have all the paperwork and information, but the state procedure is new to us only a couple months, and we're, and we're recognizing that that's an important thing for the abutters and the town directors to see there's, you know, something that's coming, coming our way.
Thank you, sir.
Thank you, sir.
So, what do you guys think? I mean...
I think from his perspective, just asking him is it complete? Is there any more that he has to go do?
Right, okay.
I think that's what he's looking for.
Okay.
Because if we don't find it complete, then I think he's hanging out there, just going, what else does he have to do to finish the application?
Can that be done conditionally, contingent upon the...
Well, at this point, it's either we find it complete, or it would be tabled at this point.
You can also lean on Lee Jay and ask him what he thinks the best way to do it is.
Yeah.
Excuse me, I'm trying to eat dinner.
Yep.
I have an HOA meeting that I need to deal with as well, so, here for me. Oh, that's the life of a planner that travels around to all the communities. Again, I haven't reviewed the submission as it is today, so I can't tell you from my perspective if it's complete or not. I will go on further again to say that, I mean, I think we're somewhat on the same page, Mike and I, and Andrew. I don't know, Andrew, how many other projects you've dealt with regarding lot splits that have occurred, but where these splits have occurred within a five-year period, that's where they really complicate things for becoming a subdivision, regardless if it's a 20-lot subdivision or a 3-lot subdivision. And so, we still haven't got the subdivision submission for this, and so, I mean, I think that somewhat complicates it a little bit. Beyond that, I mean, I, I can't tell you that it's complete, only because, again, I haven't reviewed it, but I do think there are subdivision issues that are gonna need to be dealt with, even if it's just from a, like a policy standpoint. There may not be any technicalities for review, but there is a submission requirements for that as well. So, that's something the board should consider in your deliberation.
Lee Jay, when you looked at it before, was it complete, or when you and Mike spoke, using Mike as a professional in this, because, again, I'm not the professional, he is, did you guys speak? Did you guys, you know, come to an agreement before that it was met all the completeness needs on the solar side, not the subdivision side, not the residential side?
No. As a matter of fact, the first time I saw the actual plan was like a week ago. I hadn't been involved in, from this aspect. I had heard about the solar project, and I had heard that it was, you know, attached, if you will, that it was abutting the residential development, and that's how I came around to conclude my determination regarding whether or not it was part of this project or not needed to be considered. So, the first time I actually saw this part of the application was like a week ago, and I honestly, I'm, I am, I am just hammered with development projects all over Southern Maine, and so I didn't have the opportunity to review this from a detailed technical standpoint to say it is complete or it is not complete, in all fairness to you.
Okay, could we have Mike maybe speak to that? Maybe he could, because if you haven't had a chance to see it, maybe Mike can, as a professional, can tell us if he's checked all the boxes before he submitted. I'd like to hear from him if possible.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may, I mean, Tammy, do you, I know you've been here a very short amount of time, but do you believe that you've reviewed adequately enough to make a recommendation?
When I went through it, I, there are a couple of notices at the very end of the recommendation that was made, that I would like to see, you know, take place with it. But based on the issue with determining whether or not it's a subdivision, my recommendation would be wait to see what Maine DEP says to even come close to making it complete. Because if it's complete, as soon as you get those recommendations back from the state, if they say it's, it's all set to go as a separate entity, we can get you back on the books. It's, they meet every two weeks, the first and third Wednesday, Thursday. It's not gonna be hard to get you on the books.
On the books.
Onto the agenda.
So, in that...
Some of that determination needs to come from us.
Right.
And on some other issues, I'm gonna be, not this issue, so don't worry, Andrew, there's nothing technical there, but I'm gonna be dealing with the town's attorney, and I can certainly get his run-by on this as soon as I can have a conversation with him, so.
Okay.
I think if it's ambiguous to us, I think we probably gotta pump the brakes and consult with the attorney and give this gentleman a little more time to review as well.
Okay.
I think that would be doing our due diligence.
Yep.
One more thing, Mr. Chair, if I may.
Yep.
Tammy, in your hypothetical, or perhaps, Mr. Chair, in the hypothetical Tammy described, would, if I do get a determination from the state between this meeting and a subsequent one, that it is its own entity, and that we don't have to make a subdivision application for this development? Coming back on the books would be standing in front of you for 10 seconds and having it be found complete, and then scheduling a public hearing at a subsequent meeting? Okay, well...
Yeah, what I, what would take place, because I know it's gonna be forthcoming?
Yes.
I will get the letters all set to go. I will get the newspaper release all set to go. I will get the abutters' letters all set, ready to go, certified. So all I have to plug in is the date.
Okay.
That would be it, and you only need a week's notice. I might need a little more, depending on how they come back.
Yep.
Because if it's coming back as a subdivision, I need to publish it twice. If it's just a site plan review, I only need to publish it once. That is the only hangup, and because it's been sitting out there for so long, or for a period of time, there could be a special meeting called for it. That is also an option.
Okay. Sounds like that's the best option moving forward. I appreciate that.
Okay.
Thank you.
All right, thank you.
And with them tabling it and not putting a date with it, you can get back in sooner than later.
Okay. And I know you mentioned it before the meeting began, off the books. Does the town intend on having a second meeting this month?
We don't know yet.
Yeah, we haven't discussed that. It's coming up.
Thank you.
Yep, thank you. All right, so now, new business. Conditional Use, Revive Acupuncture and Wellness, 70 Worcester Road, R 32-17-4, Annie Cannon.
He's on Zoom, just to let you know.
He's on Zoom, just to let you know.
Okay.
Hi.
Hi.
I'm not sure why my video's not on. Can you guys hear me okay though?
Yep.
Can.
Okay, um, so my proposal is, I'm currently an acupuncturist in York. And I'd like to move my practice to Berwick. I currently live at 70 Fur Worcester Road, which is right next to 70. And I'm in the process of buying 70 from my neighbor. And I'd like to convert the residential property into a commercial property for my acupuncture practice. Pretty straightforward. There's really nothing major that needs to be done to the property. With the exception of just putting in an ADA compliant ramp for handicap patients. And then I'm not even sure if I'd need to do this immediately, but eventually I might want to add in some additional parking spaces. As the practice potentially grows, but as it is now, there's really nothing major that needs to be done to the property. Except just approving it for commercial use.
Looks like Lee J, do you have anything on this?
Um, excuse me, I think I did do a review and a quick memo on that. I'm not sure if you got it or not.
Yep.
It's at the very back of their packet.
It's, yeah, I mean, this is really just a change of use. There's nothing physical. Happening at the property regarding parking or regarding. Regrading or anything like that, so it's, it's pretty straightforward. It's really just. A matter of saying, yes, it's okay to allow an acupuncturist in that property. Versus building a new building or anything of that sort, so pretty straightforward and, and I don't. See anything that would really complicate this issue, this project at all.
Yeah, and Tammy and Jen?
I'm good with it.
Okay.
Yep, she's met with us. She's done everything she needs to with me.
Okay.
Yep.
The building sounds, is it what she wants to do?
Yeah, it's a, um. Yeah, yep.
So.
I'll make a motion to, to, are we approving? Is that where?
Uh, we are finding it complete, right? The application complete basically for this?
I, I find it complete.
A second back.
Okay, further discussion? All in favor?
All right.
Okay, now it's just set a date for the public hearing and a site walk.
Something to think about if you know the location of it. You don't, I believe you do not technically. You may. Schedule a public hearing in a site walk if you want.
I would at least do the public hearing just because of the.
And I like doing the site walk, so I.
Yeah.
The issue with the site walk, I know she mentioned it's, it's sale pending. If she doesn't own the property, is that an issue for us doing the site walk and do we need to wait for that?
No. Yeah, she already knew that we were. Annie, right? You already knew that technically they may have to do a site walk and you were okay with that, correct? Yeah.
Yeah. And the current owner is okay with that and actually the loan was, the loan was just approved today. So it's just a matter of signing everything.
Nice.
Just didn't wanna go walking through somebody's backyard.
Yeah, as long as I know a date, I can convey that to him and he'll be completely fine with that.
Excellent.
All right, so. Was it January that we're into for the site walks and hearing, public hearings?
Yeah, if you opt not to have a second meeting. You already have one potential public hearing on January 6th. I believe that's your next meeting.
Okay.
The first one in January.
Well, I guess we should probably have that discussion on whether or not we should do the next meeting or not before we.
Well, the next, is the next meeting contingent on whether or not they come back?
No.
Does that matter?
Nope, nope. It's a matter for us.
Right, it's in your bylaws that you have the option on certain months not to have a second meeting.
I mean, it's pretty close to the holiday, so.
I'm fine either way.
I'm fine, I'm available.
I'm available.
All right, so I guess we're gonna be doing it then, so. Would we be doing the site walk then, the 16th? Okay?
Yeah.
And then what time?
You'd have to do it like, at that point, it's gonna have to be 3:30-ish to be able to see things.
Okay.
Yeah.
So is that work with you guys or, I mean, I can do it?
I can, I can make 3, 3:30-ish, not much earlier than that. 3:30 probably be best.
Okay, so 3:30?
Yep.
Okay. So 3:30? On December 16th.
And is that something that I need to be there for or?
Yes.
Yes.
Yeah, okay. So December 16th at 3:30?
Yep.
Yep.
Okay.
Now, as far as the public hearing goes, you could do the public hearing on January 6th. Because I won't have enough time to get the notice to the newspaper.
That's fine.
That way, if you have any questions, when she comes to the meeting that night, she can get that all squared away before the public hearing and we can publish the information.
Yep. Sounds good.
So the public hearing on the 6th of January?
Yep.
And that would be at 6:30?
Correct.
And how long should I anticipate this site walk lasting?
Maybe half hour, 45 minutes.
Okay, perfect.
All right, and that's that. Thank you. So we'd already discussed the next meeting, so I guess that we'll leave the second public comment open. Any public has any questions, comments? All right, seeing as no one there, close that and informational items. Well, Jen?
You ready?
Yep, I'm ready.
Great. Sat down with Captain Locke today from the Burke Police Department. We had a scheduled meeting to update that ordinance that we were trying to update. And things kept coming up with, we're gonna get the rough draft put together. We're gonna make sure that we like the wording of it. And we're gonna submit it to James and Lee J first and then we'll come to the board with it when it's ready. I think you guys are gonna like some of the changes. Some of these ordinances that we have, as a lot of you know, were written. Way before 2000 and a lot of them don't make sense anymore. So I encourage you guys to find little things in it if you want to and need to and depending on who, like this one made sense for the Burke PD to sit down with us and. Rewrite. It's something that they prosecute, so it's, it's good, but there's a lot of little things in there that you guys might wanna do some updating on. I know that we do that, you know, here and there. James was really good about that.
Yep.
But James is now our town manager, so we just wanna make sure that we're going forward with the same steam that he had with that. Cause it makes sense to do so. That's it.
Awesome, thank you.
Thank you.
Oh, okay.
If nothing further, from esteemed Burgess Meeting Room in the depths of the Berwick Town Hall, I'd like to make a motion to adjourn.
A second back.
Yeah, all in favor? There we go. Good night, guys.